I need to report.
I look.
We will not submit. So. So, later. Pursuant to Article 9, Section 16 of the Constitution of the Federated States of Micronesia, and Title III, Section 201 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, and as set forth in the official rules of procedure of the Congress, I hereby call the 21st Congress of the Federated States of Micronesia, Sixth Special Session, which is being held remotely due to the circumstances caused by the COVID-19, do order. May we all, uh, bow our heads for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll back.
Senator Arrethos?
Yes.
Thank you. Senator Christian? Senator Figuer?
Yes.
Senator Collin? Floor Leader Harper?
Good night.
Senator Conman? Vice Speaker Moses? Senator Ned? Senator Palik?
Yes.
Senator Preman? Senator Romolo? Senator Orsmao? Senator Welly? Speaker Semenah?
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, eight members are present.
For a reason, uh, we do have a forum to project business. If there's an objection, uh, pursuant to our understanding, I hereby appoint the members of the Pompeii delegation to Congress to continue to serve as our committee to wait on the President. Uh, and Vice Speaker will continue to serve as the Chairman of that committee. And please consult with the President and his Cabinet on when and where to have that, uh, meeting. Okay, next item, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, point of privilege.
Uh, go ahead. Vice Speaker Moses, state your point.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, Floor Leader and members. Uh, I wish to rise on a point of privilege to acknowledge the presence of His Excellency, President David Panwell, along with the Honorable Vice President, Yussua George, who are with us in the gallery, in the temporary gallery this morning, so may we give them a round of applause. Also, if I may continue, Mr. Speaker, we also have, uh, in our audience today, Her Excellency Carmen Cantor, Ambassador to the FSM from the United States of America. May we all also give her a round of applause. And we have numerous, uh, numerous, uh, individuals, uh, mostly the President's Cabinet and some local chief executives and some friends also in the gallery, so if we could just collectively give them a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Moses, for introducing, uh, our important, uh, guests with us this morning in our opening session. Any other point of privilege? Uh, Floor Leader Harper? Floor Leader Harper, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to all honorable members as well as all those who are observing our session from Monday, especially, uh, uh, Honorable, uh, Mr. Vice President George and and all those people who are joining them in observing our session. I just want to say that our Counsel General is here with me this week with our Sergeant at Arms, and please let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Floor Leader, for introducing our, uh, last Sergeant at Arms and, of course, our Counsel General. We are very grateful to them for helping you, uh, to out in Guam. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none, there's no.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, uh.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf on behalf of Senator Ned, uh, and the rest of Pompeii delegation, I'd like to introduce especially, uh, a member of the chief executive of the local governments, the Honorable Antonio P. Sarabio, Lukan Menlap of Kiti, or Chief Magistrate of Kiti.
Thank you, Senator Christian, for introducing one of our, uh, magistrates, uh, in Pompeii. Okay, any other point of privilege? If none, Chief Clerk, let's continue. Next item.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Item 5, Presidential Communications, when receipt of numbers 21-297 through 21-327.
Okay, assign those communications, Chief Clerk. Okay, next item.
Uh, the next item, Mrs. Speaker, is, uh, Item 6, FSM Supreme Court Communications. There are none.
Next item.
Item 7, Member Communications, also none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, Item 8?
Item 8, Departmental Communications, when receipt of numbers 21-69 and 21-70.
Okay, assign those, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 9, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, when receipt of number 21-61.
Sign that, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 10, State Communications, Mrs. Speaker, we do not have any. Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications, there are also none. Item 12, Municipal or Town Communications, also none. Item 13, Foreign Government Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. We're now on our order of the day. Item 14, standing on the report. Any report, Chief Clerk?
Mrs. Speaker, we have an awaiting list number 21-27 for reports, awaiting the 24 hours requirement.
Yes, call up the chair. Congress is back in session. Uh, there is an awaiting list, uh, members, uh, review that. Okay, next item, Special Committee Reports. Do we have any report, Chief Clerk?
Uh, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. Item 16.
Item 16, Mrs. Speaker, it's Assignment and Measures in Communications. We have an assignment or referral sheet number 21-82.
Okay, Chairman and members of the Cabinet is, uh, review that for planning purposes. Next item.
Item 17, Unfinished Business, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, we're on Item 18, Bill Calendar. Do we have any bills, Chief Clerk?
Uh, in the meantime, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay, Item 19, Resolution Calendar. Do we have any resolutions?
None, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. Item 20.
Mrs. Speaker, Item 20, this is Introduction of Bills and Resolutions.
Members, if you have any for introduction, pass them on to Chief Clerk. Next item.
Item 21, Miscellaneous Communications, when receipt of number 21-25.
Yes, sign that. So finally, uh, Mr. Mida is retiring, yeah? Okay.
What do you mean finally, Mr. Speaker?
Well, that's what I meant. He finally resigned, I mean retired. He's been saying that for quite some time. And now we finally decided to do it. Okay. We're on the next item, miscellaneous business. Do you have any miscellaneous business, gentlemen?
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Today, I would like to stand to say a few words about our relationship, our relatives from the United States of America and the People's Republic of China. On the subject of the United States, when I was going to school at Our Lady of Mercy, learning the 1, 2, 3s and the ABCs, we would always have had to stand outside, rain or shine, with hands on our hearts, on our, well, over our hearts, and sing a song that I did not know was the national anthem of the United States. And we sang it really well. We really practiced, and I think the whole school learned it well. I wish that schools in Micronesia today would learn to sing the Micronesian anthem as well as we did the United States anthem. And I had no regrets, Mr. Speaker. I don't sing well, but I think among all of those people, my voice was just part of the whole chorus. But today, in item 13, it says foreign communications, none. I take exception to that. The presence of the ambassador representing President Trump here makes a very big noise here. So I guess we could say that, yes, the presence of the ambassador speaks louder than a communication that would have arrived on a piece of paper or through internet. So I want to thank the ambassador for joining us this morning and also thank the president for inviting the embassy to be with us today. The Porchulai, this was one day that I always looked to during the elementary days, was when we celebrated Porchulai. First, there was no school. And those are the best days of my going to school, the days that were no classes. And Porchulai is approaching real quick, where, when America celebrates its independence. And I take this opportunity among, with those who may wish to, an early one, to wish the United States a wonderful celebration of the commemoration of their independence from their cousins, uncles, and aunts across the Atlantic Ocean. Congratulations to the United States. On the subject of China, the People's Republic of China, I want to talk about a bridge, a good bridge that has been built to serve a community in my, well, a bridge that serves my house, basically. The bridge has been completed and it's been sitting there for two months, and I'm having to go around the whole municipality just to get to my house across the bridge. My question is, isn't there a penalty for not turning over the bridge as completed? And shouldn't Karl Hapist, the Secretary of Transportation, be asking the president if they should go ahead and open the bridge? What is a bridge for? For celebration or for a purposeful use by villagers? And so, one, congratulations to the United States on the celebration, upcoming celebration of their independence. And two, to the president and the People's Republic of China, please open the bridge for the people of net. Over.
Thank you very much, Senator Christian, for your statements. Yes, we are grateful for the ambassador from the United States and joining us this morning. I know it's been something in the works. They've been inquiring about it. They've requested that they can join us. And just because of the logistics, we weren't able to accommodate. I think last session, that's when they made their request. But we're very appreciative of the fact that they were able to join us in the opening of our sixth special session. And for the bridge, I have no idea what's the order. I know the president is there. Again, when you meet with him, now our committee to wait, and I'm pretty sure you will explain the reasons why it's not yet open. Okay, thank you for your miscellaneous business.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
I'd like to belabor the issue. You know, somewhere in the Bible, you will find a verse, a warning to governments, that if the government does not rise to the level of response that is expected by the community or the people, the people rise to do things that are, one, not very good, and, two, can put them in jail. My relatives, my family have been cutting the barricade to the bridge, throwing the drums under the bridge that barricade the bridge, shoveling away the coral that was put there to indicate the bridge is not open. Saw and cut away a very large tree that was placed across the bridge to prevent people from crossing while we wait for the celebration. And while we wait for the celebration, vandalism. And eventually, bad things happen when you don't do the right thing quickly. So I'd like to ask the president to help us with that, speak with the China group and see what can be done to expedite the opening of the bridge. Thank you. Do you have any more minutes? I would like to continue with a lot of stuff. I got nothing else to do at the House.
You have all this morning, Senator Christian, so keep going.
Over.
Oh, you're finished? I thought you said you need to say more. Okay, if you want to reserve your time for another day, tomorrow or next few days, so be it. Okay, any other miscellaneous business from members? Floor Leader Harper?
Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader Harper first, then Senator Palik next. Go ahead, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. First, I want to ask our righties to take care of our system because people are coming in and out. So hopefully tomorrow will be better than today. The only thing that I want to raise on this, during this miscellaneous business, which is still raised, if it would be possible for the head committee to call an oversight hearing with the task force, special task force, so that we can have a more reasonable place on what they've been doing and what are the regulations that they have already implemented and those that have not been implemented, and their plans and activities in the future. And so that we can also have a question to them. We may have lots of questions. So I would kindly ask if it would be possible for that oversight hearing with the whole Congress. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Floor Leader. Of course, we will, when our chairman of HSA join us, we will instruct him. But the staff will take note of that, so it's passed on to the chairman, Perman. Okay. Senator Palik?
Speaker, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, honorable members. Let me also join all of us in acknowledging and paying respect to His Excellency President Panuello and also the honorable Vice President, the U.S. Ambassador, and all the staff and those who are observing our session this morning. Mr. Speaker, you know, I also wish to take this opportunity to thank the president, the National Task Force, and also the state leadership in all their effort to make sure that we remain a COVID-free nation. I wish I could say congratulations, but I know we've got some quite far way to go. So I would encourage the president to continue to implement the measures that have been taken that has brought us to where we are today. Mr. Speaker, while we're doing everything in our capacity and power to make sure that we remain a COVID-free nation, I think out there, the word information out there is that we're technically in a global recession. And while I think we need to take time to also address that issue, being proactive, we may have to look at our information to determine if FSM is actually and technically in a recession. And more importantly, actions that we ought to take to minimize the impact. Again, I want to emphasize, and I think all of us will agree, that the safety and the security, health of our people is priority number one. But I think it's a good thing to be proactive, to be aware that the impact of COVID-19 could be significant and could continue in the coming years. So information we're getting from outside is that the recession and possibly a depression in coming years because things are quite uncertain. Therefore, it is imperative, Mr. Speaker, that we watch things very closely. I would encourage our finance to do an analysis to determine where we are with respect to our economy, our cross-domestic product, and actions that we can take to again minimize the economic impact of this global pandemic. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palik, for your statements. Yes, of course, we need to know updates on our efforts to continue to prevent the introduction of this disease into our islands. And at the same time, we must be concerned also about the economic impact of this. So what you're saying is something that we should pursue. We will have our staff work with the appropriate executive officials to see what we can glean from information that we have available, to know whether we are approaching the same level of concerns on economic recession or depression as you alluded to. So we need to keep that in mind. Okay, any other miscellaneous business? Chairman Romolo?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you and members. And I would also follow suit with the previous speakers in welcoming His Excellency President Panuello, Honorable George, and all the delegates who are in the gallery this morning observing our session. My miscellaneous, Mr. Speaker, and distinguished members, as to some sort of making a correction to an action that has been signed by the president with the advice of the key staff in finance on a bill that was line item vetoed, bill number 21-151, which line item vetoed section six on two public projects, which I did not make an amendment to that item, and yet it was line item vetoed. So I want to make sure that the record is corrected by the statement that the line item vetoed to me doesn't have any purpose since there wasn't any amendment to that item, public project, item one on section six. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. What's the number of the act? Act number what?
The original law was bill number 21-151, bill number 21-216, CD1.
Okay, thank you. Staff?
Mr. Speaker, Act number 1, 121.
Act 121, okay. Can you please take note of that, staff, so you work with the budget and finance people at executive to figure out what's the correct action to be taken on that. Okay, all right. Any other miscellaneous business? Chairman Figuer, you have any? Turn on your mic.
No announcement.
We're still in miscellaneous business. Do you have any greeting cards?
Oh, miscellaneous business. Wait, yeah, Mr. Speaker, I'll wait for the report from the committee to wait on the president.
Okay, okay, so we'll do that. From members, do you have any miscellaneous business? If none, okay, I just want to add that this continues to be the process for us, this special session during our budget, regular budget process. So I would like to urge all the committee chairs to continue to arrange for public hearings with the appropriate offices and agencies to kind of work down your pending unfinished hearings with the offices and departments. So by the time we get into September, things will be pretty much done and ready for our consideration of the FY 20 month budget. So that's all I would need to just remind Chairman of the various committees. Okay, if there is no objection, we will go to announcement. But I just want to remind members that we will have a short get-together after session. Here, we will just try to see what we can do, plan out for the rest of the special session. Okay, now we'll go to announcement. Chairman Figuer? Any announcement? Okay. You're still?
No announcement, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Figuer. Chairman Welly is not here, so Chairman? Chairman Perryman is not here. Chairman Romolo?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your committee will hold budget hearing with TOJ in the upcoming days. So I'll make further announcement in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. That's a huge department, so it's good you begin your hearings with them. Okay, Chairman Conman?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker, the announcement from the special committee on climate change and enforcement on issues.
Okay, Vice Chairman Palik, any thing that were different to you?
No announcement, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Okay, Vice Chairman Arenos? Did you get any?
Thank you for the announcement.
Okay, Vice Chairman Christian?
For which committee? You know, I'm such a popular guy. I'm vice chairman for two committees.
You know, I'm such a popular guy, I'm vice chairman for two committees, because they couldn't decide which one and which to place.
Make your pick, whichever.
The two committees have no announcement.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chairman Christian. Any announcement? Vice Speaker Moses, as chairman of the committee to wait, and.
Thank you, I've consulted with the president, and the committee to wait will have an audience with the president tomorrow at 9 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, that's good, okay. Just tell your other colleagues since they're not here, so they can join you tomorrow morning at 9:00, at the president's office, I take it. Okay, any other announcement? If none.
Speaker. Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Kulen, just join us, take note, Chief Clerk, just note that he just came in during announcement. Yes, Chairman Kulen.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, me first.
Oh, okay, I will give it to Vice Chairman.
I withdraw my announcement that the committee on transportation has no planned hearings.
Okay, fair enough, okay, so since you're chairman, the chairman just came in. Chairman Kulen, you have the floor, announcement, we're in announcement now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Your committee on DNC is scheduled meeting on Thursday at 8:30 a.m. And, Mr. Speaker, this is in regards to some of the nominee on the board, as well as some of the law to change on the CIA composition. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Kulen, okay, so take note, members of DNC committee, you have a hearing at 8:30, Thursday, this coming Thursday, on nominations and CIA bills. Okay, anything else? Okay, if none, remember, we'll have a short, we'll stay back to have a short discussion after our session. If no further announcement, Frereader, you have any announcement, then your usual motion?
Thank you, Speaker, no announcement, but I just want to ask members to kindly remember Chairman Wale, you know, who is, so that he can be well informed, and so, Speaker, I move that we stand in recess until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Any second? It has been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, chuk time. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Of course, no, motion carried, Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, chuk time. Okay, thank you very much.